All right, welcome to the April 13th meeting of the City of Davenport zoning board of adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of zoning ordinances for hardship, variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Dan Darland, chairman of the Davenport zoning board of adjustment. Members present today are from your left to right, Mike Galliart, Bridget Boy Carlson, myself, and Angela Layback. Online is Jeff Blumker, so he's a board member but participating remotely today. Staff present today are Laura Berkeley, Scott Copes, and our attorney Mallory Bagby. If you have mobile devices, I'd ask that you turn them off so they don't interfere with our room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the chair. The only exception to this standard is that the staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure that we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. And we ask that you stay there. The microphone is actually directly above the podium, so you need to be there because this is all recorded. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice are at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they'll be permitted to speak to answer the question, but I'll ask that you keep your response limited to the specific question. Check. Any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? If none, I will take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed, or were you late? Okay.
I concur with the motion.
Okay, thank you, sorry, there's a little delay, I'll slow down. So that motion passes, it would have passed anyhow. All right. First order of business, so new business is for hardship variance request 23-08 of John Rocha. Is John here? Okay, excellent. You stay there for a second. Great. So this is at 1214 Christie Street for hardship variance to access an alley-served residential property via the street. The new construction, single-family dwelling with lower-level attached garage would be accessed directly from Christie Street. Section 17.09.03.0K.4 requires access to this property to be from the alley, and this is in Ward 6. May I have the staff report, please?
Scott Copes, Development and Neighborhood Services. So as you've just read there, the zoning code for this requires the access to be off of the alley when there is an alley. And this photo here shows north to the top, Christie runs on the east part of the property line, north and south here. The alley is right running east-west on the north property line. And so normally, they would take access from this area there, but they're going to be taken in the east, from the east is what their request is for. There is some topography challenges here. When you look to the north, there's a 12-foot change in elevation, and I've got a shot of that over here. So that's when you're looking to the north, that's the 12-foot change in elevation. And so that's one of the challenges, I think, if they would to use that alley at a regular basis, is that every time they would get into the alley, they wouldn't really have a great chance to see what's coming from the north. This is just the building elevations which you've seen in your packet. The photo here on the right side, that's looking at the west elevation. Christie's right here, the driveway comes off of Christie. There would be stairs and a balcony. The lower level is the garage. I guess if I go back one, the north elevation here is what would be facing the alley. There is a door to the west side for access. But so because of the slope of the alley, it's not possible to have an underneath garage off of the alley. It has to come from either the south or from the east. And then given the size of this lot, that's kind of a challenge to... They would either have too much building coverage or too much pavement coverage on this lot, should they attempt to do it a different way. And again, this is just the front elevation, a little bit clearer shot. And on the west here, so you can see there's... It does slope down when you get to the south side of the project. And this is the north, and here's the south. There's the walkout doors here at the west end of the facade. And this is looking northwest, kind of at where the lot would be and the driveway would be. This is looking southeast, and south, and southwest. And again, there's that hill again that we've seen. So we've notified all property owners within 200 feet, there were 16 of them, we have not received any comments back. So our findings are, number one, the ordinance has created a certain type of hardship, given the slope of this lot and the difficultness, I would think, of accessing the Christie Street from the alley. The physical topographical conditions of the site do impact development. Unique circumstance has been established due to those items. And protection of essential character has been established. There's a street, or there's a house further south of this that does access directly off of Christie Street and not an alley, so it's not really changing the character of the area. And so staff's recommendation was approval as proposed.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, any questions for the staff?
Yes, Scott, could you go back to the photos of the elevation, especially on that south side?
Oh, the elevations you want?
Or no, the photos of the property?
The photos, okay.
Yes. Maybe this is a better question for the applicant, but the stakes that are there, are those the property pins? Do you know? If you don't, we can ask the applicant, but...
That's my understanding that they're near the property.
Okay, okay. Can you just kind of go through those again?
Yep.
There is some pretty severe elevation changes through there.
So this is facing southeast or south-southeast.
Sure.
This is northeast, and so the driveway would be in this area here. And this is... Oh, we just did that one, that's southeast again. This is facing due south, so Christie Street's here on the left.
Sure.
And the former school building's over here off the edge of the photo. And this is looking a little bit more to the southwest, just a little bit. You can see the corner of the alley here. And so they're going to be taking that out for the driveway in this area here. And again, this is looking due north. You can see the former school building in the background, and this is Christie Street from what you can see of it.
Thank you.
Questions? Jeff, do you have any questions?
You know, it would appear that there are some safety concerns there, but the staff feels comfortable that, you know, the juxtaposition of the structure on that lot is such that those safety concerns are mitigated. I'm comfortable with that.
All right, thanks, Jeff. All right, applicant, you can go ahead and come up, and please introduce yourself.
My name is John Rocha. I'm obviously the one applying for this. My wife and I bought the house probably two or three, or the lot, two or three years ago, and then we ended up demolishing it, and now we're trying to do this. I did have a packet put together, but I think Scott probably did a way better job at explaining it than I could, but I do have these if you guys would like them.
That's all right. Just do you have anything to add to what staff presented?
No, that's exactly what I was going to say. Like I said, I think Scott did it much better than I probably would have, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Board members, any questions of the applicant?
Just to confirm my question to Scott, those stakes there with the flags on them, that's the property pin?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jeff, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I'm good right now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the request? Anyone in the audience wishes to speak opposed to the request? Any other comments? Applicant, we're good, okay. All right, board discussion.
I guess I haven't. Yeah. Yeah, the severe elevation changes surely, I think, warrant that the best place for access to a garage.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve HV23-08 as proposed.
Sure, I'll make the motion to approve HV23-08 as staff has recommended and approve the request.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Boyd Carlson?
Yes.
Layback?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Darland. Oh, and Blumker, sorry, before Darland, Blumker.
Yes.
And now finally Darland.
Yes.
All right, thanks, that's passed. Okay, next order of business is a request HV23-09 of David Bell on behalf of Ryan Coff at 2646 Dubuque Street for hardship variance to construct a 24-by-36 pole barn-style garage on a residential property, which will exceed the allowed area for detached garage properties owned R4C residential. Section 17.09.3.0K allows a detached garage of 720 square feet, where this is 864, so 720 or less, and this is in Ward 7. May I have the staff report, please? Scott Copes, presenting again.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I think it's an echo. Jeff, can you mute your phone?
Yes, can you mute your phone? Yes, sure, I'll try.
She asked nicely twice.
Okay, testing?
Testing. Test, test.
We're still getting the echo. Laura's going to unmute here.
You're coming through nice and clear with me.
Okay, testing now. I think we're good. If you need to talk, Laura will unmute you, or you can raise your hand. Will that work? Do you know how to raise your hand in the program? You can't talk, can you? Because you're muted.
All right, well, Jeff, I'll make sure I'll reach out to you by name at each point. Scott, can you go ahead with the staff report?
Jeff, I can't unmute you, so you'll have to unmute yourself in order to speak again. If you can't, I will call you directly. We'll get out of go-to meetings, and I can call you directly. I think part of the echo is happening because you had us on speakerphone, and that was probably what was causing the echo.
Scott Copes, Department of Neighborhood Services. So this request is for a garage that exceeds the allowed size. By default, as a minimum, the code allows 720 square feet. So if your house size isn't enough to equate to 50%, being at least 720, you get the 720 regardless of the size of your house, and that's the situation in this case. The proposed garage that they're asking for is 864 square feet, which gives you a difference of 144 square feet, or approximately a 12-by-12 area. There we go. This next slide just shows the table out of the code. It just reiterates what I've been stating, that 720 is a minimum. And so this other slide we put in here is for the calculations of how we calculate things. So on a practical standpoint, staff always uses the Scott County parcel report, which is on the left-hand side here. And there's three columns that we utilize. The first one is the gross living area, which is basically like any stories that are there, a first story, a second story, et cetera. The second column would be the attic type. So when we utilize that one, it'll say so many square feet finished, and that's what we utilize. The third one, the basement finished area, that'll say so many square feet of living quarters. So if there's something populated in all three of those, then we would add all three of them up for the total of finished area. Now, with this particular project, there is no basement area finished. Yes, there's no basement area finished, and there's no attic. So we take just the regular square feet, which is 18... Sorry, 1281. And you take half of that, that gives you less than the 720, which is like 600 some. So therefore, we bump them up to the 720 allowance for what they would be allowed. Now they're proposing 144 beyond that. This is just the overhead of the shot of the property. The garage is going to be in this general area here. It'll meet all setback requirements, the side and the rear setback requirements. It'll meet the height setback requirements. This is just another photo of the site. And this is the site plan that we were submitted. It says it's going to be six feet off of the alley and four feet from the side property line. This is the north elevation of the garage, so the main door would face north. And this is the east elevation, so the overhead door is going to face the alley or west. And we notified all, is it 29? I can't quite read it there. 30... We notified all 30 adjacent owners, and there was one comment, and that letter was sent to you via email. It is also in front of you right now, and that was from the adjacent owner across the alley at 67, or 2667 Fair Avenue. This slide just kind of summarizes some of the concerns of that neighbor. Commercial vehicles are coming and going from the property, which have increased traffic. Commercial vehicles park overnight and long-term behind the property. People frequent the property, have reported this house full of commercial servers to sell electricity to companies, and the plan and installation for the pole barn appears to have specs that serve commercial use and not residential. Staff has gone through and reviewed this request against the approval standards of the ordinance. Item number one, the case the ordinance created hardship has not been demonstrated. So there's nothing in the ordinance that doesn't allow the property owner to have a 720-square-foot garage. They're allowed to have that, they can have that, they want to go over. There's no ordinance-created hardship necessitating them to have something beyond the 720 square feet. So building plans were submitted on March 17th. That's the first time staff had a chance to review them. The developer has stated that they purchased building materials prior to our review, and they have done so at their own risk. Item number two, physical and topographical conditions of the site do not limit developments. This is a completely flat site, unlike the other site where we had a topography challenge. This is a completely flat site. There's no restrictions on or limitations to where that garage could be in the rear yard. It's a typical rear yard, it's flat, and it provides plenty of space for a garage. Note, item number three, there's no demonstratable evidence establishing unique circumstance. So this residential property is like other lots. It is similar in lot size to other lots.
Scott, can we change slide around item three?
Yep, sorry.
Thanks.
So, yeah, this lot is not a super small lot in the city. There's lots of lots smaller than this, there's obviously lots bigger than this, but it's a typical lot for this neighborhood. And it's a flat lot again, and it does allow for a garage, 720, to fit on that lot without any unique circumstances prohibiting them from meeting a bare minimum of what they're allowed. The applicant hasn't provided us any physical property... They haven't provided any evidence the physical property has on unique circumstance that does not apply to other similar properties. So again, we're basing that off of what they've submitted on their application, and there's nothing in their application that demonstrates that. And the last item there, essential character, the applicant has submitted, and I can show you these in a little bit, but you've seen them in your packet, but the applicant submitted photos of some sheds that had metal siding. The applicant didn't submit any pictures of garages with metal siding. So in staff's opinion, the metal siding would be out of character for this area for a garage, since there are no garages that have metal siding. So item number four, it may or may not be in opposition to the essential character. The size of the garage to a layperson walking down the alley, I don't know if they would know that, well, the basement's not finished, therefore, the garage is slightly oversized by 144 square feet, but the siding material would be noticeable. So all approval standards must be met to have approval, and again, three and possibly four have not been met. Staff recommends that the board adopt staff findings and move for consideration of the applicant with a no vote, which would be for denial, as the staff's findings do not support approval of HV2309. And that concludes my report.
I'm going to pause for just a second and call Jeff directly. I think we lost him.
It sounded like it dropped, yeah. Just for the audience's information, if we can't get Jeff back, we can proceed with the four without any problem. If we drop down to three, that causes a special circumstance, both four, we can just drive on. So none of you guys can leave? Said so don't leave.
Jeff, are you there? I didn't hear him answer anything.
Hi, this is Jeff Blumker, and I'm not available to take...
We can proceed without him.
All right, all right, we'll move on with the four. Board members, any questions of staff?
Sure, I do, Mr. Chairman. Scott, on the site plan, I think it determined that the garage would be four foot off the property line. Does that meet the setback?
Yes, four foot is the side. The minimum is four foot, yes.
I have a question. In one of the photos, there's a fairly large tree that looks like it would cover this building. There, is that tree on the property, on the adjacent property, or on the property that's...
My understanding that tree is to the south of the property, but I'm not 100% certain with that.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to take it down?
Right, they've already started some grading and such, and it didn't appear that there was any trees in the way of what they were doing.
So on this photo that the applicant submitted, with the three-car garage, do you have any idea how big that is? Are they...
Well, so the question would be, how much living space do they have? And then secondly, it was developed with a different code. We had an alderman that pushed through an ordinance that allowed a detached garage of 1,080 square feet previously, which is a rather large garage. And then that might, yeah, that lot's probably also the one that's zoned multifamily as well.
So it's relative to that brick structure behind it?
Yeah.
Looks like it.
So it's not the size we're discussing?
No, it's also zoned completely differently. Multifamily versus residential.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, applicant, or speaking on behalf of the applicant, you can go ahead and... So we're hearing from David or from Ryan?
The reason that we're applying for a hardship, I've been in business...
Can you go ahead and state your name first?
Can't hear.
No, but I just, once you're up here, I need you to state your name so they can hear you.
I can't hear you.
Can you state your name?
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm David Bell, president of ABC Garage Inc., Incorporated.
Okay.
We've been doing business in the Quad City area for 20-plus years. We've built thousands of buildings. This building happens to be number 1,295. You know, so we do not, we do not take things, you know, just from the top... You know, so, we do not, we do not take things, you know, just from the top of our mind, because we are in so many towns and cities. The codes and things change all the time. So, I make it a practice, I go to the city, I tell them what I want, what size I want, how big can I build it, and I get the answers from them. So I went down to Tremont, like I always do. I gave them the address. I told them we were gonna build a post-frame building. And what size can we build? They bring up the screen, they tell me I can build 944 square feet, and a steel post-frame is permitted. Can't be me, I turned it off. I thought I turned it off. So they gave me dimensions of 944 square feet. This is 100 and some feet under that. And that the building was in the code. And the, it's, it's a double lot, so there's plenty of room. There's no doubt about that. And so, after I got all the information from the city, then I purchased the material and requested drawings from the engineer. I never do that until I know that it's, we can do it. City said I can do it. And later, when I went back and asked the guys at the desk, I says, "It's been turned down for being too large. You told me I could build it larger than that." They says, "Well, we made a mistake. We forgot to deduct for the basement. The basement isn't finished. Otherwise, it would be legal, you know, within the permit. But we, we forgot, we didn't do it. It was our mistake. Well, I've already paid for engineered drawings. You know, I've already bought the material, I've done the grading, I'm all ready to build, but I haven't got the permit back from the city yet. So I go back to the city and ask them, and they goes, "Well, it looks like it was denied for being too large." And I says, "How can that be?" And the guy at the front desk, he's been there a long time, you know, I've dealt with him forever. He says, "I made a mistake. I gave you the wrong information." So, no fault of ours, the building was designed, it's six feet longer than it can be now. But before, it was 100 feet under. To make, you know, I wanted to make sure. And I always do like five foot off the alley, I make it six foot. I always, you know, I've done this for so long, so many years. You know, our margins are very tight, and we can't afford to make mistakes.
Right.
And this is a definite hardship. We have special order material that we cannot return. And it's, you know, few thousand bucks out of my pocket.
Right.
And it's, you know, the mistake was not ours, it was the city.
I understand what you're saying. And I'll, yeah, I'll have questions for staff about that in a minute, after we let you sit down. Sorry. Any questions?
You okay?
Yeah.
Do you know specifically who you talked to at this--
Yeah, it's, I really don't know his name. He's the one that's been there forever. For, he's been there six, seven years, eight years at the front. He's not the newer, the newer guy finished it up, you know. But I got all the information from the guy that, if you go to the windows, he's on the left side, you know. And he just, he says, "Dave," he says, "I just screwed up."
So, so the design of the building, it's all metal cladding, all the way on all four walls--
Yep.
With metal cladding roof as well?
Yeah, and the roof, the resident has a blue metal roof, and this building has a blue metal roof to match it. The walls are white, the walls in our building are white, so it matches the building. And, you know, it's actually only six feet longer, you know, than is permitted, you know.
What, what would you estimate as to the very top of the eve as to what that height would be?
Do what now?
What would the, what height would you estimate the, the very top of the, the crown of the roof? What that height would be?
Yeah, you measure heights on buildings to the center of the gable, not the peak.
Yeah, but I, I'm interested in what the peak was.
It's a 412 pitch, so 12 feet would be four feet total.
Okay, so 16 feet, approximately 16 feet.
And the--
To the top.
The code is 20.
Understand, understand. I was just interested in what that height would be.
Yeah, it's, it's well within the code.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Do you have any documentation from this, whoever it was that told you?
Do what now?
Do you have any documentation from the person who told you it could be this size?
No, I never do that. I ask them, I assume that, you know, they've always given me the correct information and, and-- Yeah, they know what they did. When I went back to talk to them, they just forgot to deduct the basement. If the basement was, the basement's partially finished, if it, but it's not completely finished. So that made the difference.
Sure.
Any questions? All right, we'll, we'll let you sit down, and I'm gonna have a question. We'll go ahead and let you sit down, and then I'm gonna have a question for staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
When you get my age, if you got bad knees, get them fixed right away, don't wait.
So, my question has to do with, I guess, a little out of my swim lane, Tremont. What is it, who is it, what's their authority?
I think he's referring to Public Works.
Okay.
It's on 46th Street, near Tremont.
Okay.
In Davenport.
So, so what authority do they have as far as?
The true authority comes from the permitting process itself. So there's no representations made on behalf of the city, official representations made on behalf of the city, except through the permitting process, not a preliminary review. It sounds like at the time of the conversation, there was no permit even applied for. It was just a conversation.
Right.
And anyone at the front desk would not have final authority without that full review. And you are not bound by some preliminary statements either.
Right. Okay, that's, that's what I want to know, so, okay. And then, can we go to the slide that had the dimensions of the, of the house? So the, you're using the 1281 for your calculation, and of course, half of that is less than 720. But the 1281 and the 607 would be 1880. So half of that is still less than what they're asking for.
Those calculations are in your packet also?
Right.
But that, that would be involving a finished basement?
Right, right.
A fully finished basement.
I'm just--
The cells in red are what the applicant's statement is. The cells in green are how we calculate it. The light green is what they would get if we didn't have the 720 minimum. The dark green is the 720.
Okay. It'd be 184, it'd be 944. Okay. Any questions? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the request?
Hello, zoning board of adjustment. My name is Ryan Coffin, the property owner at 2646 Dubuque Street. How about that hail, right? Anyone's car got dinged in that? Well, having a garage would be kind of nice. We can have a garage, no problem. But let me testify real quick to the veracity of Mr. David Bell and his ABC Garage Company. We called around 10 different companies looking for someone to build a garage on this property, and he was the only one to call us back. Throughout the process, he's been nothing but transparent and honest with us. We really appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Bell. This lot here is quite a big lot by comparison to other lots in the city, maybe not in exactly that area. It's the only lot in that entire alleyway without a garage. Every single other house along that alley that can fit a garage has a garage. Many of them are quite big. We've enjoyed using our big yard to grow our own vegetables, to reduce solar power that powers us, not really being sold back, there's no servers at this property, it's not commercial use. We're growing our own vegetables, because I want to live a little more sustainable. Sustain, eh, sustainably. I believe sustainability is key to our future. I'm 34, I hope to have 100 years to go. We'll see. I eat a lot of steaks, so I don't know. We're asking for this hardship variance from the board, as the garage we plan to build is 864 square feet, which is 144 square feet bigger than allowed. I've been in closets bigger than that. Now, they were pretty big, so. And we plan on this size as Mr. Bell stated, he'd spoken to the city, and they said this size would be okay. They've built thousands of garages. But let's put that aside for the moment. Why does this size limitation exist? Why do zoning codes exist? Why do you have these rules? Well, it's obviously to maintain the character of a neighborhood. You don't want a tiny house with a huge garage everywhere, that would look weird, it would be strange. So the question to ask first is, would this garage be weird? Would it be out of character? You can take a look at the provided photos. You'll see the plot where the garage is going in one of the photos. Right behind that is a very large garage at that multifamily property. So this residential property is right on the boundary. You have some multifamily properties, there's lots of big garages in that area. Right across from it, that very big garage, multifamily property, right catty corner from us, you see big, big garages in the other photo on every property in the alley. Based on my estimations, I walked around some of them, measured them with my feet, and then I went on Google Earth, measured them with satellite imagery. Some of these are bigger than what we're building here. So by no means would this garage be out of character. The dimensions of three of the other garages in this alley are 28 by 32, that's 896 square feet. 24 by 26, that's 624 square feet, smaller. 49 by 22, 1,078 square feet. So this garage would not be weird, it would actually be the third smallest, or third largest garage out of about six or seven garages. So it'd be right there in the middle. According to the various criteria that they ask about, will strict application result in hardship unless specific relief is granted? This board is powered, empowered to give that relief. You're allowed to say yes, a little bit of a bigger garage, 20% bigger, no big deal. You can say that. The hardship being, as Mr. David Bell spoke about, materials being purchased cannot be returned. Particular physical characteristics, surrounding shape, and topological conditions of this area. Well, this is actually a slightly bigger lot because of the way Dubuque Street comes off right on that corner there. It's a little awkward, but also there's all these other giant garages in the back alley. This garage would be by no means out of character. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances that do not apply to a majority of adjoining properties. Well, we're the only property without a garage there, that's weird. And then also those conversations with the city. And then, we spoke on the last item, the character. Well, there's big garages throughout that alley. So I'd like you to consider approving this hardship variance. Help us build this garage that won't really be out of character, to answer some of those questions about why metal. This building, the, the house there has a metal roof. So, other properties along that block are getting metal roofs installed, metal's just the future. The, we chose to go with metal simply because of price. The cost of wood has been up and down like crazy. And it was $10,000 cheaper to go with metal, so we're not trying to build like a commercial-looking pole barn for that purpose. But also, we're matching the colors to the building. The house is white, it's got a blue metal roof on top. This garage is gonna be white with a blue metal roof, it's gonna look fantastic. It'll blend very well with the neighborhood, in my opinion. Also, this garage would not be denied at this size if they just happened to have a finished basement, which is something someone from the outside would never notice, which is, you know, seems interesting to note. You, you wouldn't feel guilty approving this, because if we just happened to have a big basement, it could just be a bigger garage. So that's kind of a, a good reason for approval as well. Thank you guys for your consideration, and I appreciate all your time and the hard work you do for the city.
Appreciate that. I have a question, what's, what's the purpose of the garage?
So I own a Dodge Grand Caravan, my fiancee owns a Jeep. We're gonna park those in there, and we need the extra space for our gardening equipment. We currently have that in kind of a plastic shed, and every time there's a Durachow or something, I worry about that stuff. We're growing like cucumbers and tomatoes and vegetables in the garden, so keeping all that stuff safe would be nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, hang on. Are there any, any questions from the members?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but regarding one of the objection letters, that one was concerned about commercial vehicles coming and going constantly, and storage of maybe solar panels or whatever with the company that I, I assume you are--
So I own Iowa Solar.
Iowa Solar, right?
Yes. We had commercial vehicles there while we were putting in those solar panels. Those vehicles haven't been there in quite a while. I own other commercial properties that those vehicles are parked at. It's not profitable for us to keep solar panels and solar equipment on hand anyway, so it won't be used for any commercial purposes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? All right. Zoom in the audience who would wish to speak opposed to the request. Please come forward. Same process, state your name and--
My name is Bob Stone. I'm just getting over laryngitis, so I might have to elevate my voice to get it out. My name is Bob Stone, and I've been a resident at 2647 Fair Avenue. I think me and my partner, Daniel Travis, bought the home in 2010, and I've been living in the neighborhood for quite a while now. Daniel cannot be here, he could not get off work to be here. But we've been in the neighborhood quite a bit. We have no personal issue with Ryan. I want to know, he's a very nice man. But I do want to attest to our observances, I've been in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has had a lot of barriers. It's a block north of the park, but it's had a lot of barriers for years. And we're trying to encourage people to develop their residential properties so it's more attractive to people. There, at the moment, there is a high level of rental properties in the area. And across the street, most of them have flipped over to homeowners. So we are trying to improve the neighborhood. We have a rental complex right next door, the brick building, you may have seen it. All those neighbors are awesome and great to live with. But behind us, there's been a lot of activity over the years. And I, I want to stick to the bullet point so I don't complicate things. But there have been a lot of commercial vehicles, and again, I'm representing Daniel's opinions as well today. A lot of commercial vehicles parked, they haven't been parked there lately because of the excavation, but there's always commercial vehicles coming and going. We don't see a lot of, I don't want to use the word residential cars, but cars that homeowners would have very often. My understanding is that Ryan does not actually reside in the home, or is not there often, and different people have lived in the home from what we observed. And we always, I'm very social, and Daniel, my other half, also talks a lot with people. People coming and going from the home have indicated commercial use of the property, selling electricity back to the electric companies, commercial development. So one of our biggest concerns is we'd like to see, even above the pole barn, or whatever it's called, a garage, we'd like to see the property developed, even if it's rented out, as residential. And that's our concern, is that our observances, it doesn't appear, it seems to be people are running a business out of it through the years, and not just Ryan, it's been that way before, for a long time. Like, we talk to everybody, I don't have names, I mean, I never had documented in that way. So that's a concern, is that the property is being developed commercially. And when we got the letter on the pole barn, that was an indicator and red flag to us that that was a possibility. I don't know, I guess it's a personal choice, how big you want to build your garage. Our thought was it's gonna be to house commercial vehicles, and maybe housing other things. We're also concerned that it would house product for the business. The other thing too is the pole barn itself, there is-- The other thing too is the pole barn itself, there is, I think it was mentioned, I think Ryan mentioned, there is a garage just in the same alley, on the same side of his property. I think that was built before, like you said, zoning or zoning laws had changed, somebody had mentioned. It does appear to be commercial, but it is smaller. We don't really want more of that. If there's a way of this structure, we don't want to restrict the enjoyment of someone's property or the fact that they want to develop it. But we are concerned that it's going to look commercial. Size is a part of that and how it's finished is a part of that. So we don't know if there could be an adjustment in the size or in the outside of it and how it is finished, if that's a possibility as well. Anyway, those are our concerns. Like I said, I don't know what the future of this property is going to be. People are always coming and going. And sometimes for great periods of time, it seems like nobody's even living there, even as of, you know, through the winter. So that's all I could say is that again, our interest is in the development of the neighborhood and that everything sticks within the parameters of what a residential property should be and what it should look like.
Okay.
That's all I can.
Appreciate that. Board, any questions?
You said you'd live directly behind?
Yes.
This address? And you have a detached garage as well?
We have a detached garage. It's probably one and a half or a one-car garage.
Okay. And it is, well, the applicant provided us some pictures. I'm assuming that it's, can I show on this, this, this blue one? Is it blue siding?
No, that's the neighbor next door. They just had their house sided. Ours is like beige, it's more of an old-fashioned ground, it looks like a little house actually.
Yep, yep, gotcha.
With a brown asphalt roof.
Yep.
Oh, and if I could speak, I mean, we, you know, we're not opposed to the metal roofs. Everybody's going that direction. Even the apartment complex next door had the Amish come and put on a metal roof. We know that's the future. But the outside appearance, I, I don't know that we need more commercial-looking property or structures. But you know, I respect the decision that the zoning board makes and I promise to be good neighbors with Ryan, whether he rents it or lives there or whatever he does. But I do have to, I have an obligation to also speak on behalf of Daniel Travis too, so. But anyway.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
For the applicant, do you have any final comments?
It was noted in staff's recommendation that it was possible to restrict the garage from commercial use. The, Bobby who just spoke had told me that his garage, he doesn't park in there because he's got gardening stuff in his garage and that's kind of something that I want to avoid and why we want this bigger size. If I put the gardening stuff in the garage, well then the cars are getting hailed on. If I put the gardening stuff outside, then that's going to blow away in the derecho. Just hope to answer those questions. Thank you.
I, I have, Mr. Chairman, I have one. Do you currently live there now?
So I live there part-time, my fiancee lives there full-time, our two cats live there, we don't have two cats in my house. My house is two blocks away at 2945 Brady Street.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion time.
Mr. Chair, could you ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Or again, since we have a newcomer?
Yeah, I thought about that when I started walking. So, ma'am. Ma'am, we're here, we're here discussing a request for the address of 2646 Dubuque Street. Do you wish to make any comments regarding that property?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, board discussion.
I do have, Mr. Chairman, I do have some concerns. Kind of what Mr. Stone brought, brought up as well. I think my concerns are specifically the architecture of the building. I think it'd be a little more palatable for me, at least in my opinion, if it was, you know, something more into character as to what the architecture is. It's some of the garages in the neighborhood, not just sheet metal cladding. And the height, I, I know it's within code, but it does appear to, that it would stick up and out, kind of like a sore thumb. Yeah, and I, I know Mr., he has said that this will not be used for commercial vehicles, but I guess that's yet to be determined, but those are the concerns that I have.
Okay. And so I did a little bit of, a little bit of research on the garages. And the applicant mentioned two vehicles and gardening tools. So a standard three-car garage, from the research I did, measures 22 by 32, which is 704 square feet, which is allowable. Seven by 20 gets you another foot, so 22 by 33 roughly, or 22 by 33 and a half. So a three-car garage would be allowable and still be within, you know, would be able to house two vehicles and garden equipment and still be within code from the research I've done. If that's worth noting. Any other comments, discussion? Angela? Okay. So at this point, I would, I'd ask for a motion to approve HV23-09.
I'll make that motion to approve HV23-09 at 2646 Dubuque Street for, for hardship variance to construct a 24 by 36-foot pole barn.
Do we, before we vote, do we want to consider as part of the motion that if passed, that it would be for residential use only? Do you want to add that to your motion?
I will not add that to my motion.
You won't?
No.
Okay. Second. Okay. Go ahead and roll call vote, please. Layback?
No.
Galliard?
No.
Boyd Carlson?
No.
And Darlin?
No.
So the motion was denied. That's that. We have no other, no other business today, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please stand adjourned.